This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. And notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall website. I'm sorry, Home News Tribune, Star Leisure and Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted on the Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com. And on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, The Star Leisure, the Highland Park Planet on May 12th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall's website at www.hbborough.com. And on the bulletin board at 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, on May 12th, 2023, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The five exits are to my right and left of the council chambers. Meredith, could you lead us in a better direction?
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rose Hall.
Mayor Foster.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Burge.
Here.
Councilwoman Choham.
Here.
Councilwoman Stonic.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovir.
Here.
And tonight takes us to, any questions on the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Now we move on to awards and honors and presentation, and tonight's a really good one. And it's a proclamation to Main Street volunteer Meredith Carmen and Ira Grassgreen. And it reads, whereas the Borough of Highland Park, a small community, is greatly indebted to the efforts of our volunteer, who advise and supplements the services provided to our elective official and borough staff. And whereas Main Street Highland Park Organization orchestrates a wide range of activities for the benefit of the borough, residents and businesses, many of which would not be possible without the robust involvement of volunteers. And whereas Main Street Highland Park, annual effort to maintain and refresh large planters along Raritan Avenue serves to beautify our neighborhood and to add color to, add color and life to our primary walkways. And whereas Main Street Highland Park recognizes, recognizes and is exceedingly grateful to Meredith Carmen and Ira Grassgreen, two longtime residents and volunteers who have overseen the downtown planters initiative for 15 years. And whereas Meredith Carmen brings to her efforts on behalf of Main Street Highland Park, her considerable training and experience in landscaping and architecture, which includes her degree in landscaping and architecture from Hope College, and her professional work of 29 years as a licensed landscape architect for Bolsonberg Associates in Park Hills, New Jersey. And whereas Meredith meticulously creates plant layout maps for over 160, for over 160 planters, with each one featuring different plants and different designs, and cheerfully distribute these maps and instructions to hundreds of community members who stop by on planting day in May to help put them in the planters, in our, put them in our downtown planters. And whereas, gonna skip Ira, cause Ira's not here? Maybe Ira's coming? Okay, I'll read Ira's. And whereas Ira brings to his efforts on behalf of Main Street Highland Park, his considerable training and experience in horticulture, which includes a degree in horticulture from Rutgers, his professional experience as a wholesale representative for a horticultural plant, and his over 20-plus years of experience as a volunteer at the plant sale at Rutgers Garden. And whereas Ira works with plant companies and orders hundreds of plants for planters every year. And tireless effort contributes to the plant, to the plants at our public display. Now therefore, I, Mayor Elsie Foster, do hereby give a heartfelt appreciation to Meredith and Ira Grassgreen on their extraordinary dedication and their exemplary service to beautification of our town. And I do have the proclamation, I think Meredith is the only one that's here. Councilmember Hale, wanna help?
Sure.
I just whispered, I see you in church all the time, never realized that you're the one who does this.
All right, one, two, three, just go one more. One, two, three, perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much. I think y'all need to give her another round of applause. Wow. Before I go into council report, I just wanna start off with a little bit of notice and, and before, especially before public comments. There has been a lot of chatter and a lot of questions about what about our redevelopment process. And we're aware of the numbers of questions that have been floating around about redevelopment plans and where we are in the process. We take your inputs very seriously, and we appreciate the people who made comments and have committed their time and has shown great interest in our town and the development of our town. Unfortunately, we are not able to provide a specific level of details. But we will real soon, in short order of time. Right now, it's just too early for us to provide those details. We promise you that as soon as we know, we promise transparency, because that's one of the things that we run on. And as soon as we know where we are in the process with our professionals, councilmember Hale and I have been meeting with the professionals. We have been talking to professionals, conditional developers. And we have impressed on them that our town is very anxious. They wanna see renderings, and they just don't wanna see, they wanna have things that they can look at, and they can feel good about, and they have a part of the process, they want ownership. And we all want ownership in what we do. And councilmember Hale and I will continue to work with these developers and these professionals, and to create visuals that you will be able to see ideally before the end of the year. So again, we're asking you to be just a little bit more patient, it's coming. And we're working tirelessly, we have not slacked off, we are working tirelessly to make sure that we can present something that we all will love. And I say "we" because we live here too, this is our town, we are just as festive in our town as you are. Thank you, and I'm quite sure there's gonna be questions later. But I wanted us to start off with that for those who are here for that particular subject that we can't provide details. And now I'm gonna delve into council reports. Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief report for public safety tonight. First of all, congratulations to our new officer Trey Wilson, who was sworn in and equipped today. He was very comfortable with our questioning during our interviews, and he brings a good background and experience to our community. Also, I'd like to thank Trish Sanchez, who's been the chair of SWAC since its inception in 2016, but due to professional and personal commitments, she's stepping down at the chair. She will remain serving as a member of SWAC, but the SWAC Committee's vice chair, Sean Dean, has agreed to assume responsibility as co-chair, along with Peter Dope, who's a current matter of SWAC and has been there since its inception, an avid cyclist as well. And he's also former chair of the Borough's Complete Streets Committee. We can't thank Trish enough for building SWAC, and our successes have set an example for other municipalities as well. With regard to the library, excuse me, planning moves ahead on the new roof plate installation, as well as the contractors work on the renovations for the remainder of the building. Tonight, we have the second reading of the bond repair, or I'm sorry, of the capital ordinance for the roof repairs. And that's my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. So thanks for reporting on arts and recreation. To start off like I usually do, I just wanted to reiterate that the Borough has grocery store transportation and online food shopping assistance available through the Department of Community Services. For more information, please reach out to the Stafford Community Center at 732-819-0052. While looking forward to being able to stop giving that update every night, cause I really need a supermarket back here. We've had a couple of fun events coming up, so first thing is this Thursday, September 21st, 7:00 PM at Pino's. The Historical Commission is gonna put on a presentation on the findings from the recently concluded historical survey of our downtown. The presentation will briefly cover the broader history of Highland Park and focus on how the development of Route 27, the Gator Lincoln Highway, shaped our town. So again, that's this Thursday, September 21st, at 7:00 PM at Pino's. Next up, on Saturday, September 30th, the Mid-Autumn Festival will be held at the Farmers Market Quarkin Lot from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It's a celebration of unity, prosperity, and good fortune. It's gonna feature a dragon and lion dance, Chinese opera, martial arts, Tai Chi, and food crafts and art vendors, so I'm looking forward to that, I'll see y'all there. Again, that's Saturday, September 30th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at Farmers Market Quarkin Lot. I'd just like to report on a couple of community center programming highlights. On Wednesday, September 20th, tomorrow, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, there will be the Millsix County Senior Health and Fitness Walk in Roosevelt Park in Edison. If you're interested in attending, please reach out to the community center. Transportation is available for anyone who needs. A little later down the road, we'll have our first flu shot clinic of the season on Tuesday, October 10th, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It's free and opens to all residents, six months and older. So if you cannot make this date, have to worry, there will be plenty of other clinics, there will be other flu shot clinics throughout the fall and winter months. That's a big reminder, cause I gotta get my flu shots too. Moving on to one recreation update. So registration just opened up for an additional theater program due to the department, and that's the Musical Theater Review Workshop, where you can gain confidence and experience in singing, dancing, and acting while learning the fundamentals of Broadway style musical theater. It's open to second through sixth grade. The first class starts October 9th, and to register, please sign up through the Borough's MyRec website. And last, I just wanna highlight this one cool project that the Art Commission is starting to roll out. So the first set of sidewalk decals that the Art Commission has worked on have been installed. They look great. You can find them at Irving Bartle, the high school, Carson Park, and outside the community center. So encourage everyone to check them out. This is just the first round of five, I believe there's 10 more to come. And it will be an open submission, I think, announced soon for people that wanna create the art that will be used in the sidewalk decals. And very coolly, project. And that is my report for tonight, thank you, Mayor.
I have a quick question about the art project. Is it the one that has to square out by the community center, you just scan it with your phone?
Yeah, so it's like, it's just art that, you know, shows, it just, you know, beautifies whole space. And then the, the, there's a QR code that you can scan to get a little bit more information on the artist and the artwork. So again, encourage everyone to check it out.
Councilmember Kim Choham.
Thank you, Mayor. The Rent Control Board will be meeting next Wednesday, September 27th, at 5:30 PM here at Borough Hall. This is, this is a rescheduled meeting from, from last month. I know there's been some, everyone had some comments and some concerned residents about the rent control board. So next Wednesday, 5:30. Reminder, Senior Freeze applications are due October 31st. And you can visit www.seniorfreeze nj.gov. This Thursday, September 21st, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the New Jersey Chinese Chamber will be hosting an insightful and informative conversation, diving into the unique challenges and rewarding aspects of caring for aging Asian parents. This event will be held at Golden Seaford, it's 5:18, Old Post Road, Edison, New Jersey. Please reach out to Tammy Payne at tammy, T-A-M-M-Y dot N-J-C-A-C-C at gmail dot com for more information. And today is National Voter Registration Day, a day to learn about voter rights and requirements. You can also learn about mailing voting. If you have any questions about voter registration as well, if you recently moved, be sure to know the requirements and make your vote count. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. First of all, I wanted to give a big shout out to all the volunteers and to Main Street Highland Park for the Arts in the Park event. The rain was brutal in the morning, and yet there were people lined up helping vendors find their spots, set up their tents, and do all the things that need to happen before the event starts. During the event, volunteers and staff worked tirelessly to make sure everything was running smoothly. We were lucky that the sun sort of peeked itself out, and the rest of the event was quite successful. And then also remember that they all do the breakdown, after it's all over, after we all go home, there are more volunteers and more staff who take down, help take down the tents. And along with DPW, who helped get the streets clean. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for Arts in the Park, it was on September 10th, a huge success. Coming up, some, a couple other events are big. The next big one is Townway Garage Sale on October 14th and 15th. And this year, to go along with all of the garage, there will be garage bands that will be sort of playing along with you. So that's kind of a cool addition, so come out and get some cool stuff and listen to this. Again, October 14th and 15th. As always, please come out for the world famous and award-winning Farmers Market Fridays afternoon, and then the Night Owl Market as well. The schedule for both is of course available at the Main Street website, mainstreethp.org. And just a reminder that we're also having the Christmas Tree Lighting and Gingerbread Contest on November 25th, and the menorah lighting with lots of Sukkot-yoke on Sunday, December 7th. So mark those down for your calendar. And then I wanted to also point out that, as many of you know, that the Borough was lucky to receive a Neighborhood Preservation Program grant, which helps with a lot of refurbishing and upkeep up on Woodbridge Avenue. And we're starting to see some really nice changes. One of the programs that the grant has funded is to allow businesses an opportunity to meet with a consulting service called Storefront Mastery, to work on small things to big things about making the front of their buildings more nicer. And so we've had a couple of those go out to businesses and do reports for them. I'm happy to point out that one of the businesses, Asia Gardens, looks like they're gonna implement some of the recommendations from Storefront Mastery. So we're gonna see a little bit more of that as we're coming. So slowly, the paying attention out to Woodbridge Avenue, I think, is paying off a lot of dividends. If you are a business owner or a resident up on Woodbridge Avenue and you're interested in the MPP program, please reach out to Emma Von Thum at the Borough Office, as she was driving. I'll just end with just a shout out, I know they're gone, Meredith has gone, and Ira. But, you know, every, every person that I talk to, not just their expertise in horticulture and landscaping and all of this, but also the way that they helped the volunteers and organized the volunteers for many, many years. You know, it's one thing to have your technical skills in your job, it's another thing to be able to work with people to help volunteers. And so both of them well deserved on the proclamation, and thank you very much for your years of service. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Canavera?
Thank you. The Board of Health wants everybody to be aware that September is Blood Cancer Awareness Month. Although they are the third leading cause of cancer deaths in the U.S., many people don't know the impact of blood cancers. This is a time to raise awareness. The Commission for Universal Access wants us to know that September 23rd is the International Day of Sign Languages, which is a unique opportunity to support and protect the identity and cultural diversity of all sign language users. Human Relations Commission wants you to know that it is also Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th, October 15th, is an annual celebration in the United States that honors the history, culture, and contributions of Americans whose ancestry can be traced to 20 different countries and one territory, which includes Mexico, Central and South America, the Caribbean, and Spain. The Mental Health Commission wants you to know that National Suicide Prevention Month is honored each year in September, which mental health professionals and advocates across the country work to reduce the prevalence of suicide and provide support to those who struggle. If you or someone you love is struggling, please call the 988 Suicide Crisis Lifeline by dialing 988, or text HOME, H-O-M-E, to 741741. And lastly, our two programs for food insecurity are the Highland Park Food Pantry and the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Visit the pantry located at the community center, 220 South Sixth Avenue, on the second and fourth Thursdays of each month, from 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM, and 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and on the Saturdays of those weeks, from 9:30 AM to 10:00 AM. Highland Park Gives a Hoot offers free groceries to Highland Park families in need of support, no sign up or no questions asked. And then on Tuesdays from 10:00 AM until 11:00 PM, I'm sorry, 11:00 AM, thank you.
Thank you. I wanna circle back to Councilmember Hale, you said November 25th, Christmas Tree Lighting?
Yes.
So we're doing Christmas in November? Hey, we do Christmas in July, so that's perfectly fine, so. But isn't Thanksgiving now?
It's usually right after Thanksgiving.
It's right after Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we can enjoy the lights.
Enjoy the.
All right. So we do our apple cider and lights and everything.
They are, I was gonna say, speaking officially as Santa Claus, that's what it is.
Santa has spoken. Our official Santa has spoken, we're good with that. And I just wanna add to Tara that diaper support month, this is also diaper support month, and there's a proclamation that you'll be signing for that as well, for people who are in need of diapers and supplies. Council President Persh.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Good evening, everyone, my name is Matthew Persh, I chair the Public Works Committee. It's nice to see so many people. Nice to see so many folks out here to support Meredith, trying to produce to beautify her downtown. I, I just wanna say, before we get ahead of ourselves with Christmas, winter holidays, we're still wearing t-shirts. It's lovely outside, I don't wanna, you know, let's prolong the summer, but it is still summer. But, and while it's still summer, take part in our Green Infrastructure Tour led by Sustainable Highland Park, it's a virtual tour, so you can schedule whenever you want. As summer winds down, we suggest that you do take some time to get outside, explore the Borough by way of Sustainable Highland Park's Green Infrastructure Walking Tour. This is a self-guided tour, consists of 10 stops between River Road and North, get that. The walking tour is, the walking tour is the culmination of a grant project generously sponsored by Sustainable Jersey and the PSE NG Foundation to install a rain garden on the side of the library to alleviate stormwater runoff. The library's rain garden was designed by Rutgers Water Resources and was planted by the help of more than a dozen volunteers and Borough staff members. The library rain garden is the 10th Green Infrastructure Installation in Highland Park, and the associated walking tour was designed to celebrate the Borough's commitment to sustainability and green infrastructure. The 10 locations can be found on, if you follow Sustainable Highland Park on Facebook, at Sustainable HP, or you can go to www.hbborough.com for more information. But just to give a little preview, some of them you're familiar with. We have a location at the Environmental Education Center, Centennial Park Rain Garden, South Third on the west side, South Third on the east side on the corner there, Fourth Rain Gardens, the Teens Center Courtyard, another rain garden on South Fifth, the new rain garden Library, and High School, Middle School Rain Garden, environmental retention basin. Sustainable Highland Park will next meet Wednesday, September 27th, at 7:30 PM on Zoom. More information for that can be found at www.hbborough.com. Just really quickly, a follow-up to last, last meeting's announcement regarding meter replacements. Just an update, as of August 31st, 1,737 meter exchanges were completed, and approximately 80 meter exchanges have been scheduled. There are 1,420 meters left to change, so if you did get noticed, please respond. Or you can call Borough Hall to see if you're on your list. There are currently 185 customers who are on the Sabbath compliant meter waiting list, and there are currently 30 meter exchanges where national metering, the contractor that is installing the meters, ran into issues, are unable to locate the meter, or unable to operate a curb stop. And they have been assisted, USA HP has been assisting national metering with these issues and resolving them. Park Partners funded cleanups. So the Environmental Commission and Sustainable Highland Park collaborate on a series of neighborhood cleanups. And part of that was funded by a $2,000 Park Partners grant. So this is a real illustration of investing in community development activity for the improvement in our neighborhoods. And Sustainable Highland Park did its due diligence and put together a comprehensive report. And just to give a, you know, a taste of what that Park Partners grant provided, the environment, they were, it was used to conduct 32 trash cleanups. 29 of the 32 were in Highland Park or in county parks. Data is only available for the 29 unfortunately, but there were 191 total sign-ins. I mean, 191 residents in total came out and helped participate in these cleanups, and many of them were repeat customers, as you can imagine. The number of volunteers and the individual cleanup range from 1 to 64. So as, you know, it is happening regardless of when people show up or not. So it's an opportunity for you to be able to participate in this every week, when, you know, when there's a cleanup at your convenience. Cleanups occurred for a total of 40, more than 40 hours. And here's the big number, 1,421 pounds of trash that could be weighed and removed following, plus the, plus items that were too heavy to weigh, things like couches, desks, tires, metal furniture frames, bed frame, and other items. And just so you know, this is, this is how our board and commissions operate. Of that $2,000 grant, $1,998.78 was spent, so.
What happened to the change?
What happened to the change? I don't know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna, that's a leverage for, for next year. But please go to www.hbborough.com for more information, and please participate in these cleanups, because they will be done for the foreseeable future, me and you. Thank you. Just related, there was a climate march on Sunday. This was a national march in New York City to end fossil fuels. And several Highland Park Board and Commissioner members were in attendance, including from Sustainable Highland Park and the Environmental Commission. The march coincided with tomorrow's United Nations Climate Ambition Summit, that will call on world leaders to commit to phasing out fossil fuels. So more on that, and I did just wanna mention, just, you know, and this is not a criticism, but just a purchase order that I just signed, related to gallons of diesel fuel, $3,447. This is the kind of, these are the kinds of, kinds of expenses that we're trying to shift. And if we can invest and advocate for more energy efficiency vehicles and appliances and homes, then I think we get to a much, much, much better place. And that's my report, Mayor, thank you. then I think we get to a much, much, much better place. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
I do have a question, Council President. You, they, they said that this whole, they found large items such as desk and mattresses and couches. Where would you suggest that people call those into if they have them and they want to dispose?
Thank you, Mayor. You can call the Department of Public Works. But if you go to www.hpborough.com, you can call the Department of Public Works and schedule a bulk pickup collection. They will do them at, at certain points throughout the year where there's an open enrollment for, for, for scheduling bulk collection. And also, Councilman Hale just mentioned the townwide garage sale. There will be a townwide bulk collection following that. So if you do have items that are going to be left on the curb, keep them out for Sunday night because there's a lot of Sunday night goodies that a lot of Highland Parkers like to go around and find. But those, those items will be collected if you just leave them on the curb. Otherwise, though, you do have to call Public Works and you can schedule, and you can schedule a pickup. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator Report?
Matt, good evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Borough Attorney Report?
A no report, Madam Mayor.
Borough Attorney's Report? We have two attorneys tonight, which is great. Oh, now it's time for my report. I'm gonna echo the voice of Councilmember Postonix, supermarket, supermarket, supermarket. He started giving his report about what we are doing in lieu of not having a supermarket at this time. I just want to let everyone know that we are still actively engaged in conversations with the owners of the property. They have found a supermarket that they like, but they're working through all the technical details. As soon as that information becomes available, I will be shouting it from the rafters. I will be the happiest person in Highland Park, letting everyone know that the deal is done. We have a supermarket, so. Let them work through the details of getting a supermarket in place, and as soon as I know, we'll, I think everybody on this stage will be shouting that message because we'll be relieved and happy that we have a replacement supermarket in our town, which is surely needed. And that said, I am pleased to recognize the extraordinary, the extraordinary effort of Melena Shkrichak-Reeney. The, the youth librarian at the Highland Park Library. Melena received a grant from the National American Library Association, one of only 29 libraries nationwide to conduct a reading club for undeserved teens, undeserved teens in the area. Melena has conducted this reading club for teens at the Turning Point Academy, the internal, sorry, internal school serving at the residence of Middlesex County for juvenile detention center in North Brunswick. Melena, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for finding this grant and for reaching out and serving this, this part of our population that surely needs all the help it can get. So wonderful work. We can't begin to thank you enough. And I see our library is here as well, supporters of the library, and Mike Bobbys is here. So please pass the word on that we are beyond happy that Little Highland Park got, our, our member got that grant to serve all of Middlesex County, and we're one of 29 in the country, so kudos. Speaking of library and speaking of books and education, I had one invitation where I could not turn down, and that was the invitation from the energetic coordinator of Zone 16 Center, Ashton Burrell. I was happy to participate in a free back-to-school giveaway at Zone 6, along with Council President Hirsch. I got to meet dozens of students and their family members and see them take the supplies that was provided to them for their much-needed school success. I was also pleased to be one of the persons to be a part of the giveaway. When Ashton asks, what can you say? But yes, I'm gonna make it happen. So I was happy to be a part of the donors that supplied the much-needed giveaway supplies for students going back to school. And on Monday, it gives us pause. On 9/11, we had to take a pause and remember a pivotal term in our history that many of us can, many of us in this room can remember in others. And that was the attack on our nation on 9/11/2001. On Monday morning, September 11th, the event featured, our, our event featured our Police Department Chief, Chief Abrams, First Aid Squad President Ari Loretta, a representative from the Fire Department, Frank Santora, myself, as well, as well raised a flag in remembrance of those victims of 9/11, along with a moment of silence. We had about three dozen attendees, along with members of our council and Assemblyman Karen Bansick, and we thank all those who came out to show their support in remembrance for, in remembrance for all those who lost their life on that tragic day. Just a little town update, and this is about urban school. You may have driven or walked by urban school and you have seen trailers. Urban school is on South 11th and Woodbridge Avenue, and there's two large trailers that is parked in the parking lot, and you may be wondering, what are those doing there? Just to let you know, those trailers are being, is going to be used to accommodate all-day pre-K program, which is a state mandate, a requirement by the state of New Jersey. I have discussed this with school superintendent, and I understand this is only a temporary situation for accomod, for accommodation for these students until a permanent classroom is built. For further information, please do reach out to the school board or to Superintendent Nicosia. Today was a fun day. Today, I was honored to have Assemblyman Sterling Stanley come to our community center, and he participated in our annual luncheon. But not only that, he came with his staff. He dropped by to say hello at our luncheon, and he brought with him his staff from the New Jersey Department of Treasury. They came to explain the anchor program and the tax rebate program to our seniors and to have them sign up for it. This was a great convenience to our seniors and a very thoughtful way to introduce the tax rebate program to them. Thank you, Assemblyman Stanley, for arranging this visit. And the lunch was also great. They had a good time. The Borough has, has started distributing our newsletter, September 2023 issue of our quarterly newsletter. On the cover, you will see me, along with Mayor Stan Joshi of Edison on the front. Both of us are holding puppies with a small news item about the animal shelter in Edison. The animal shelter is, is a shared service with Highland Park, and it is quite crowded now. If you're looking to adopt a new furry companion, now is a great time to do so. Visit the animal shelter and consider the possibilities of adoption. Another fun thing that I get to do as Mayor, this is really fun. One of the most active group in Highland Park is the Mayor Teen Advisory Council. Headed by the teens of Highland Park High School, Teen Council meets and shares concerns of teens here in town. They also raise money for local causes and engage teens with events and activities in the borough. This year, the teens decided to connect and learn from decision-makers in the borough and government and the governmental departments. At their meeting last week, the Teen Council talked to Lieutenant David Soden, the head of Traffic Safety Bureau at the Police Department in Highland Park. Lieutenant Soden discussed traffic issues concerned with the teen and answered their questions. Stay tuned. They're very engaged and they get the work done. So look out, more to follow from these teens. We support a healthy redevelopment project in Highland Park. Those that have enriched our community and respect the neighborhoods where they are located. In that spirit, I'm happy to speak of the work on Cleveland Avenue at the covert formerly, formerly followed property at the end of the street on Cleveland by Burn Chocolate Factory, to the new site of Yeshiva Shara Zion Girls. Say it again?
Sharet Zion.
Sharet.
Sharet Zion. It means the gates of Zion.
Oh, okay, Sharet Zion?
Seal. Seal, like pizza.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Seal.
Girl's school. We are making great progress, and I will look, and they are making great progress, and I look forward to the grand opening of the school at this new location next year. So stay tuned. I am happy to represent the Borough at the Luncheon Learn webinar that will be held by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection on Friday, September 29th. It will highlight some of the concerns that we're all are seeing as of lately, and it's inland flooding and how to protect and the rules that protect our areas with inland flooding. So stay tuned. I will be updating you on what I've learned and as we see the effects of climate change and how it affects our, our parks and our neighborhood, I will provide in details and sharing more about this, about what I've learned and what kind of the mitigation impacts and how these increasing floods and what results they're going to have on community as we continue to deal with climate change. That's my report, and now we're gonna take a minute and we're gonna move into our first two public discussions. It's time for our first two public discussion sessions. Total time allotted is 21 minutes. Three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item on this, if it's not listed on the agenda, please do so at the next public session. The Borough Clerk will monitor the timing, indicate when three minutes have left. She will give a warning of 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comment from members of the public attending the meeting will be heard first, followed by those members attending via Zoom. If you're interested in speaking, please step up to the microphone, or for those on Zoom, press star nine or raise your hand on the keypad. And we will, we will, I didn't, Terry will let you know when it's time for you to speak. Please begin by saying your name and address. Now it's time for public discussion for those in the audience.
My name is Robert Olds, I reside at 431 South Seventh Avenue. I'm a Highland Park Democratic Committee man. I own Highland Park Tommy and Heating. I spend my days in people's homes fixing things.
You can pick up the mic if you want to make sure, yeah?
I, I spend my days in people's homes fixing things. I interact with the citizenry more than most people do. And I just wanted to tell you that overwhelming number of people that I speak to support redevelopment in Highland Park, I have been paying attention, and I think I do understand how redevelopment works. I appreciate for you to, to, to get the best deals possible for our town with the developers. The transparency and openness needs to suffer until that deal is done. And I just wanted to get up here and tell you all that I trust you and that I thank you for your service. I really did. I just had another question. In talking to people, the thing I keep hearing over and over is that people would like to find a way ultimately for Highland Park to reconnect to the river, that we are a river town. And is there any discussion or talk about us getting a boathouse back or some way for us to reconnect with our history as a river town? Thank you.
It's interesting that you say that. Terry and I had a meeting in Edison, and that was one of the things that we briefly discussed because it would have to be some kind of shared service with Edison and North Brunswick because we all share that riverspace, and we talked about it and said that, you know, we would exploit it with the county. But my primary focus is redevelopment, but we can have that conversation as we move along. Terry, do you have anything to add?
I would mention, it's not exactly what, what Rob just asked, but we have a feasible grant for feasibility study for the River Trail concept, which has been kicking around for a long time. The consultants are kind of almost done with their work. We have a subcommittee that started a review process, and we're hoping to roll out in the next couple of months some more information about that River Trail, which would essentially connect Donaldson and Johnson Parks along the river. And some of the things we've been discussing are overlooks, boat launches, things like that, to figure out how to, how to connect people. I mean, there's a lot of, this, this feasibility study is going to raise as many questions as it answers. But it's, it's a great project. We're lucky to get the funding and, and we'll be sharing more information very soon.
It'd be great to have a boathouse.
About the River Trail. Thank you for bringing that up. The first, the first subcommittee meeting, I basically just identified some of the logistics that we have to go through. Access points, property acquisitions, or, or areas that, you know, concepts that we'd like to see. I think through the work of the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership, who is currently leasing a space on Raritan, it has shown an interest, and they've really illustrated an interest in, you know, reconnecting to the river in that way and with a boathouse. So that is something that I think many of us up here, as I'm here for sure, are really interested in, in, in doing. So we will absolutely explore that.
And we need our partners from our, to join in town to make it feasible.
We have a lot of boaters stocking their boats in other towns.
Yes, we did. I had a conversation with Addison. They're interested.
I didn't know whether this would be, because you mentioned the urban school to ask some questions about.
You can do so at the next, at the next public discussion.
That's half of this is over?
No, 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 no. After, there'll be a series of questions and
because I wasn't sure.
Lois is helping you over there.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if that was considered as part of the agenda because you had talked about it.
No, I just wanted us to give a quick update because there have been a lot of questions.
Like I'm in the corner, Lois living North Second Avenue.
I want to see you on TV.
Two items on the agenda. You have 9-23-200 Stormwater Grant, 9-23-209. I'm just gonna comment about 209. Would that possibly include the 300 block of Denison Street? That is a washboard road from, oh, maybe the 18th century? Is that, I thought it had been included on some other early improvements.
You're talking about 14J?
Yes, yes.
So the 300 block, it's like a Mary Forsberg anti-friendly feeling that I get, go past her house and bounce along. Okay, and then the Stormwater Grant, could that be separated before you get there or discussed now?
Which one are you speaking of?
14A is 9-23-200 Stormwater Grant. Are we finally gonna get more stormwater? Are we doing it with the sewer to make sure that all of these new developments will not have flooded basements again? Stormwater Grant on set agenda.
It's 14A.
Yes, 14A. And she mentioned 14J. Yes, 14A. And she mentioned 14J. But Terry, you explain.
14A, the grant, the DEP issued all tier four, tier, don't quote me on the tier. Were eligible for $15,000 grants toward our stormwater permit annual requirements. So we applied and we received an award of our 15,000. There's a number of activities, but 15,000 isn't going to go towards the kind of things you're talking about. But there's a lot of compliance issues with the permit. What we're hoping to be able to do, and it's not definite, is partner with Middlesex County's JIS team to upgrade the mapping of all of our stormwater inlets and outfalls as part of our compliance with our DEP annual MS4 permit. So there's a number of purposes. If that doesn't pan out, there's a number of purposes we could put it toward, but it's not a scale along which you were indicating.
Right.
It's not that kind of a program.
It never is. Let's see.
It's a pretty modest program to help towns progress with their permit compliance.
I'm going to talk later about the fossil fuel parade that was mentioned. I think lithium and whatever is used in electric batteries. I don't think they dig themselves out of the mountainside with lasers. The transport, the earth movers use diesel. They figure electronic stuff requirements, your batteries out of the mountains. It's transported probably on container ships. Talbretic, we love her ideas about cleaning up the earth, but now you've got, well, I'll talk about it later. You're forgetting where all the equipment comes from. You're forgetting, go to steam. You want to have clean earth? Steam engines, it doesn't have to have a bad reputation like 120 years ago. Or Jaylen, he got burned by the whites steam engine. All you have to do is, we have modern things, like your kitchen oven starts to thicken. You have sterno in the container to burn steam water.
Thirty seconds.
A thought later.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Schiffman. I live in Highland Park on North 6th Avenue. I'm a member of Main Street Board and the Design Committee. We're very happy to see that Meredith and Ira got the award tonight because she's, they've done wonderful work. And I just wanted to make a comment about one of the items on the agenda. And that is item 14C, number 9-23-202. And this is to, for professional planning services related to review and amendment of signage regulations. This is wonderful that this is being done. We work as part of the Main Street Design Committee. We've been working with Main Street businesses for many, many years on the, with the current ordinance that I think was originally drafted by Debbie Rainwater years ago. And we know it needs help. For the last few months, Debbie Rainwater and I have been working on amendments to the signage ordinance. And we did a survey of the signs on Main Street. So we will be very happy to work with LRK and share whatever we've done so far to work with them on improving the signage. So I think it's a very good thing. Word is doing. Thank you.
Any further public discussion?
I've got a few online.
Okay, let's pass over.
We have 29 attendees online and I see three hands raised at the moment. First up is Rob Scott. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Rob Scott. My address is 25 South Second Avenue in Highland Park. I'm a longtime resident since 2007. Recently elected to the Highland Park Municipal Democratic Committee for District 3. I'm speaking to Agenda Item Number 14L on the extension of the conditional redevelopment agreement with Garden Homes. I appreciate that Mayor Foster said that she couldn't speak to any details about that negotiation, but I have to express my frustration and differ because I think the members of the council certainly can speak to certain general principles. I'm also a signer of a recent open letter to the council and several questions of varying levels of specificity are in that letter. For example, one of them asks about the issue of as a redevelopment principle, the idea that there should be no net loss of central public space. And so I think that the public would like to know about some of these big issues before the conditional redevelopment agreement is renewed. So I would ask the council specifically if they could, each of them, offer their views on the notion of as a redevelopment principle, there should be no net loss of public space in Highland Park.
As I know, as I read at the top of the meeting that we are carefully looking at everything. And at this time, we are not going to make any public statements. When is, when we have the opportunity to come out and make a public statement, we'll be happy to do so. But not at this time. We have a lot of work that we need to get done and a lot of things that need to be reviewed. So no, we will not be making a public statement.
Okay, I just, 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 my question is to you, Mayor Foster. But it's also to Council President Hirsch, Councilman Postelnic and the whole council, right? Everyone on the council. And I don't think it is really a positive thing for our democracy if you speak for the whole council. I think each member of the council can, can choose to speak on how they view an issue like that. And the reason I think it's important to hear that now is because I'm quite afraid, and I think this will be on the record. I don't want to be saying, I told you so for some months, that there's going to be a negotiation. There will be an agreement and then there will be a chance for public comment. But at that point, it will all be a done deal. And there will be a unanimous vote from the council to pursue an agreement that the public really hasn't had input on. So I guess what I would, I would ask each member of the council to speak for themselves.
I was going to suggest maybe Joe might speak to the process a little because that doesn't sound exactly.
Yeah, Joe, could you speak more of the process of what it is that we're?
Yeah, but also just to the specific question, I mean, obviously council members are free to speak or not speak or outline and stand on any issue. I just caution generally, I don't see that as terribly productive when every project will stand in front of its own to sort of make a bold stroke decision that there should be no net loss. Maybe, maybe we should or maybe we shouldn't, but it doesn't really, I don't find it to be particularly helpful without facts around a particular project. So again, the council is sort of free to ask, answer or not answer, but just as a caution, having done this for decades, I think you're better off having a project in mind before you sort of make those full-blown blush decisions about whether or whether or not you agree with that statement. It's just, it's sort of, I would suspect an attempt, which you feel a bit of a box that may not be appropriate at the time. So I would probably suggest you'll sort of take a stand on that issue. It's sort of too finite for now. In terms of the conditional designation in front of us today, it's pretty difficult for these designations to get renewed periodically if it goes through the process. When you pick the initial period of time, you're sort of trying to keep the developer and us frankly on a short leash, keep us all focused, diligent on our process, but as long as the process is moving forward in a manner which is we're making progress along the way, it's pretty typical. And I strongly recommend you consider extending the designation. All the designation does is two things. It gives the developer a period of time going into this, which we exclusively negotiate with them versus the other proposers. And it gives us a source of revenue to pay for our costs and funding. And so both of those things are still appropriate at this time. If there's a moment where I feel like we're failing, both us and the developer will probably be happy to walk away then from having to pay the bills and us to move on to somewhere else.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yes, we have a couple hands raised, but I see you have an in person.
Okay, so all right, let's go to in person.
Okay, this is Ethan Schoolman of 423 Harrington Avenue, also on Democratic Committee in Highland Park. I think there are really good arguments for town redevelopment that's been proposed to welcome low-income families, provide more affordable housing, create more walkable downtown. I think those arguments are pretty solid. It seems like a lot of the objections and the chatter online and Mr. Scott said has to be more with transparency, democracy. This idea of the community hasn't had a chance to deliver input. I think that's kind of wrong in its face in the sense that this is, this process ongoing for years, but dozens of meetings include town council, redevelopment, town planners. But more than that, I think that it's a mistake to forget that we had a primary election in this town. And there were two candidates for mayor and they presented very different visions to the town redevelopment. Mayor Foster was in favor of moving forward with the redevelopment plans. She's worked very hard on, a big part of Councilwoman Harris Postelnic were also running. They said the same thing. Redevelopment plans for the farmer's market space, leaving the farmer's market, the South Third, all that stuff was online for anyone to see. And Mayor Foster's opponent ran, I think, a great campaign. It was fierce, it was fair, it was robust, it was vocal. And she provided an alternative to people who wanted to hit the big pause button on redevelopment, not close out, keep the market where it is. You know, really just, you know, start a, start a new committee and reconsider things all over. And the town had a chance to say, yeah, we want to like make a big future. And they did it. Mayor Foster won in what can be called a landslide. She won by more in the previous year had facing the same very determined opponent to the primary election. And that's democracy. That is community input in its purest form. And when the council, I hope, moves forward with these plans and they're doing what democratically they're supposed to be doing, representing the town that returned them to office with a very particular agenda. And another agenda was rejected by over 60% of people. So I'm glad that got a chance to remind people of that. I respect, you know, differing views. I think it's great to have a robust debate. But I think the study of there hasn't been community input is wrong in particular because we had a pretty good election.
There's no more speakers at this time.
I know, Mayor, we have a couple.
No, 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 we're going to head back to some.
Looks like David Hughes is up next. Please state your name and address through the record.
Yes, thank you. David Hughes, preferred to South Third Avenue in Highland Park. I would like to speak about the proposal that was just floated for a boathouse. I'm not sure if this is on the agenda, but it's been discussed. So I presume it can be discussed a tiny bit more. If that is a boathouse that would accommodate or any infrastructure that would accommodate motorboats and jet skis, I think the council should think very hard and create very much of a public process. I kayak on the Raritan River regularly and I find that the motorboats pollute because they have very inefficient gasoline engines. They add noise pollution and degrade the experience of everybody else in Donaldson Park. They are unsafe because they break the law and come within 50 feet of me on a kayak. That is against the law. And they also cause erosion. They cause ecological harm because these motorboats and jet skis come within 50 feet of the banks of the river. So we already have a situation which is ecologically harmful and anti-civic on the river. And I don't think there's any good reason to invest public funds for private pleasure, invest more public funds for the private pleasure of people who degrade the public experience and the public wealth. I would certainly support a boathouse for people who to kayak and canoe and use other human-powered craft. But you'd want to enforce for their safety, you'd want to enforce the rules of the river against the motorboaters and jet skiers. So please do not provide more infrastructure for people who cause climate change, cause pollution, degrade the ecology of the river and undermine everybody else's experience in the park. Thank you.
I see another hand here. Jessica Hudson, please state your name and address.
Yes, this is Jessica Hudson, Montgomery Street. And I just had a couple of questions on the agenda items. I wanted to start just saying my, expressing my support for 923-210, the resolution in support of the striking nurses. And I'm just really glad to see that that's on the agenda and very timely. As we know that, I'm sure you all know that they voted 89% to continue striking today. So I appreciate that that is on the resolution and hopefully will be passed. I also wanted to ask a couple of questions related to 923-201, which is the denial of the request of the permanent bond. I just didn't understand that, what was being voted on related to Highland Cliffs. And then also just if someone could explain what the issue is and why there needs to be a vote on the JSM motor vehicle. I'm not looking at it at this very moment. Let me pull it up and see if I can. It's 923-203 related to some kind of traffic. If someone could just explain those two, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
923, oh.
So.
923-03.
Yeah, 923-201 related to the denial of the request for a performance bond for Highland Cliffs. I just didn't understand what that was all about. And then 923-203, which is related to some kind of resolution related to motor vehicle with JSM. And I'm thinking that's Buckwoods. I'm not sure. I just wanted to understand that.
Sure, Jessica. Terry, you want to explain 923-201?
I'll do my best for 923-201. Essentially, before we release the permanent, the bond for a new development, our engineer reviews various aspects. I don't, I confess to know the details of why he recommended we not release the bond to the developer of this project. But they've already been chipping away at the punch list. But we have a time period frame in which we must respond to the request. So this is our response, not yet until you deal with the things in our engineering letter. And it's our understanding they're making their way through it and hopefully by the next meeting, they'll be in a position to release it. And Ed probably can advise if I'm missing something.
The punch list is not completed, simpler terms.
So that's that.
923-01, they have a number of things that they have to complete on the punch. It's not yet completed.
And 923-03?
923-03.
Or 203, 923-203?
Or people traffic enforcement on property and that is the Buckwoods property.
Yes, this was something that was done, that traffic enforcement would be done in that area. It given our police department a jurisdiction to enforce traffic on the developed property in that area.
Was there a concern and that's why there was, I just, I'm just trying to understand why a resolution would need to be passed. Maybe it's just a standard procedure or were there some concerns and this is being passed?
It is very much a standard procedure. We just wanted, we put it in writing. It's one of those standard procedures.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry, that was our last hand.
Okay.
Getting sorted and we have 29 attendees online.
Okay, so that was all right. Okay. Okay, all right. So now we're gonna go into ordinances. Ordinance is required second reading. But can you please report an ordinance 23-2075?
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to library roof in the amount of 215,000. Was duly advertised for consideration of passing on fine readings by title after due to publication on plan. Ordinance was also posted available for public inspection as required by law.
Motion to a public hearing, sorry. No, public hearing, nobody in Zoom.
Anybody on Zoom want to speak to this ordinance? Raise your hand now. Voice you are.
Yeah.
Well, we may be having a microphone issue.
I think so. That's what I do electronics. Doesn't matter what.
This is, while we are alone, this is its first meeting behind the boards.
Is it possible that you can use that one? By Tony Bowman.
Say again?
Is it possible? It's not working, so can we?
I think we can use that corner here.
Yeah, use the corner by turn.
Sorry about that.
Okay, this one is regarding the library rooms.
And yes, lowest level in North Second Avenue. Library roof, good thing. Tired of hearing and seeing it leak every 20 years, but that's I guess regularly, so 25 years. So my question is to someone. Is the HVAC staying on the roof to vibrate this new roof 20 years from now into holes? Or are we moving the HVAC to the ground? That's my question.
I don't know. I'm gonna have Kevin answer it.
We are not moving them to the ground. They'll stay where they are. The cost of redoing all of that was determined by the architect in practice.
Maybe a new unit is needed?
They're not. They're not old enough. And so for us to replace all of them with them and move them and relocate them at this time was not.
Are there more than three units?
I don't want to say for sure. I want to say there's four that I'm not able to.
So you're gonna have vibration 24/7 instead of maybe weather like today. During the winter, you've got the heat off. You're gonna have constant vibration. Okay, see you in a couple of years. Thank you.
Can you work it? You're fixing it. Okay. Any other public comments on the agenda?
I don't see any online.
All right. Motion to adopt or reject 23-20775.
It's 207.
2075, 23-0.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Definitely a major step for the library. We can have improvements inside if we don't have the roof fixed. And the planning is ongoing to get the best possible plan engineered, including the curving fixtures for the HVACs and other installations on the roof, which the architect and the borough are still working on. I vote yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kinselhahn?
Yes.
Councilman Dastani?
Yes. Ordinance required first reading. Please report on introduction of ordinance number 23-2076.
Councilwoman Herring supplementing and supplementing over the Borough Fine Park Chapter seven traffic establishing schedule XXI mid block pedestrian crossings have been introduced and running by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by town.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Authorize publication as required by law and stop public hearing practice.
Someone, second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
This crossing is another important piece of pedestrian and cyclist crossing. This will be in the long distance, so it's just beyond the train trestle. If you notice lately, there's been a lot of pedestrian traffic. I don't know how we're ever gonna solve the problem of 125 year old train trestle. The pedestrian traffic is, this will help to divert pedestrian and cyclist traffic accessing from Highland Cliffs and Long Island into Johnson's Park and along the walkway there, which has been improved to take pedestrians right up to the river and cross into New Brunswick. And hopefully, the county will have to improve it because it's a county road. And they'll also hopefully install the lights like the rest of the, oh, yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kinselhahn?
Yes.
Councilman Dastani?
Yes. Now it's time for the consent agenda resolution. May I have a motion to adopt or reject consent agenda 14A through 14N?
So move.
Okay. Roll call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I've seen okay, yes, for the rest.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kinselhahn? I've seen okay, yes, for the rest. Councilman Dastani?
Yes. Now we will talk maintenance. Public Information Committee member, Beth Stevens, motion to confirm.
So.
Second.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Just gonna give a shout out to the Public Information Committee. Yes.
Councilwoman Kinselhahn?
Yes.
Councilman Dastani?
Yes. And now it's time for the second public discussion. Total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. The Borough Club will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has left. She will give a warning of 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or if this statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comment from member of the public attending, the meeting will be heard first, followed by those attended via Zoom. This goes on Zoom to speak first, press star nine or the raise hand button and star six to unmute yourself. Please begin by telling us your first name and your address.
I think I can talk.
The other one works now.
They'll pick me up, believe me. I have never had trouble with my voice being picked up. My name is Debbie Israel. I live on Barnard Street. And I'm being on Barnard Street. I'm close to the Irving School and I just became aware of these trailers.
Classrooms.
Huh?
Modular classrooms.
Modular classrooms, is that what they are? Okay, they look like trailers to me or train cars. Just wanted to know where these overflow students are coming from. And then I have another question about something else.
As I reported earlier, there's a state mandate that pre-K three, the pre-K classes have to go into effect. And that's from three years of the pre-K, three years old.
Okay, so these are new students that have, that are from families that are already.
These, yeah, these are Highland Park families that have children that are three years old. And now they can attend full time pre-K kindergarten classes.
Not aware.
So there is, yes, there's no influx of anyone else. These are regular Highland Park families that would normally utilize a daycare to take care of their kids, which they had it when I was a little ones. But they didn't. And so these families are working out really well.
I just wanted to understand what it was.
Not a problem.
The second question is, I, the election was mentioned, people voting. I hear tell that you can vote in person before the day of the election. Is there any place nearby where that can be done in any date that's not a Saturday?
I would suggest that you call the board of election and they can provide you that information. But yes, you can go to the county and vote, but I don't have all that information. It's through the county.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I do have a person on Zoom. You ready?
Yes.
Matt Feldman. Actually, I have two hands raised now. Matt Feldman, you're up first. Please state your name and address for the record. Matt, you may need to unmute yourself.
Hi.
Little change here.
It's actually Matt. And this is Diane speaking, North Fourth Avenue. I am participating in a working group that spans the nation dealing with accessible parking spots. And on Monday, someone raised an issue that was new to me and I wanted to bring it to the attention of the town. As people are looking to add charging spaces for EVs in various parking lots. The issue was brought up that they should be placed in a way that does not negatively impact existing accessible parking spaces. And I know that we have a good ordinance in town about, that covers accessible parking. And I just wanted to bring this up to say that I'd like us to consider adding a statement in there that when charging spots are added to existing lots, that they do not negatively impact the current accessible spaces. Thanks.
Thanks, Diane. I think Public Safety, this will be taken up in Public Safety. Thank you.
Sure, we have a couple of other hands. Jessica Hudson, you're next. Please state your name and address.
Great, thank you. Jessica Hudson, Montgomery Street. I just wanted to return to a resident, I think it was Rob Scott, had mentioned that we had a community letter, an open letter with 75 signatures. And I just, you can do whatever you want with the questions if you don't want to answer them. But I do want to read them and pause and let you answer them because I know that the residents who signed this letter are wanting to have answers to these questions. So I'll start with the first one. What are the specific details of the proposed developments for Track C and the pedestrian plaza currently planned for South Third Avenue? And some examples of what we would be looking for is what do they look like? What are the specifications, dimensions? What is the composition of units, apartments, condos, a mix of both? What is planned for parking? That's question one.
Attorney Hallowen?
Yeah, unfortunately, those are the kind of details we can't, we don't have right now.
Okay. Well, this question was already asked, so I'll skip question two. Question three, is a payment in lieu of taxes anticipated for Track C? If yet, if yes, what is the proposed financial agreement?
Yeah, way too early to be determined.
Okay, that's your answer?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And number four, what specific resident benefits and amenities will the redevelopment entity require the developer to provide for our community? So that could mean town infrastructure improvements and upgrades.
Yeah, you're gonna be disappointed. I'm sorry. Also way too early to answer.
And these are all questions that an attorney has to answer or are these questions that the mayor and council could answer?
It's better for me because I'm negotiating it. They may or may not know what's appropriate to share because I'm leading the negotiations.
Okay, I just am asking that because I know some residents had been concerned about not getting answers directly from the mayor and council. So thank you for clarifying that. And the fifth question.
Let the folks know that because they're taking advice from the attorney, that's why they're not giving those answers.
Okay, thank you. Number five, and this is the last question. Will you commit to exceeding the state and local minimums of owned or leased affordable housing units and require that any developer and or lender waive and renounce their protections per NJSA 2A 4284-1 so that they must abide by our local rent control ordinance?
This feels like the same question before where you're trying to get the council to prematurely lock themselves into decisions that may or may not make sense in the context of an actual project. So again, I would caution them not to draw the line down on those things because it just isn't helpful when we're still trying to work our way through many different moving parts that may or may not have a higher priority than the one you described.
Thank you for your answers.
It looks like Rob Scott is up again. Please state your name and address to confirm.
Yes, my name's Rob Scott. I live at 25 South Second Avenue in Highland Park. So I did want to return to the issue of questions from Highland Park residents, from voters. Some of them are my constituents. I'm frustrated that it seems like the attorney is answering for the council. So I'm gonna try and rephrase one of the questions. I'm gonna make it more general, okay? I'm not gonna make it about redevelopment. I'm gonna be, make it about a general principle. One of the popular issues in the last election was our new rent control ordinance. Of course, there is a loophole in the rent control ordinance because of state law that allows developers of multi-unit apartments to be exempted from it. So my question is, just for the council, how would you feel about pursuing negotiations to, with any developer, right? Not specifically this one. Not the one that the attorney is telling you you can't talk about. But to get them to agree, you know, in a contract to abide by our rent control ordinance or perhaps get them to agree to abide by our rent control ordinance after five years, something like that. So I'd just like to know how the council feel about that. Because rents have been a big issue for lots of people in this town, catastrophic for some families. And the idea that the new units that may come into Highland Park will be able to be exempted from that, I think, causes a certain amount of anxiety.
So you're saying you want us to speak about a hypothetical developer that may come into Highland Park or may not come into Highland Park? Just a hypothetical question to say that they may do rent leveling or we may have to supersede the state law.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to supersede state law. I'm just asking what the council feels, right? Specifically asking the councilors, the council members, what would you feel about doing something like that in the future, specifically directing the attorney to raise in negotiations the idea of a developer voluntarily agreeing to abide by the rent control ordinance or the principles?
Try something. This might be helpful to you.
Yes, please.
So you suggested three positions that the government body take. And I want to explain to you why they compete with one another and why it's not a good idea to choose either one, any one of the three. So you've suggested on the one hand that we should increase the number of affordable housing units. You've suggested on the same hand that we should rent control the balance of those units. As you might imagine, by rent controlling the balance of the units, you might not be able to.
you might not be able to get the additional affordable housing units you want, right? Because it's all about the math and money. So if you ask the council to draw the line in the sand on particular issues, you limit their ability to take an issue that might be more important. So if I were to ask you, would you rather have rent control on the balance of the market rate units? Or would you allow more affordable housing? Those are the kind of choices you have to make. So the same thing with the United Open Space. They're going to have to make some hard decisions, prioritize community benefits, community goals, and necessity of that decision making is one impacts the other. So in your examples.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but, but.
Let me finish.
I'm not, this is not a question for the attorney, right? This is a more general theoretical question. I'm just asking, is something like that a solution that could maybe be on the table? I'm not asking for detailed prioritization or commitments or anything. I'm just asking a generality, right? I'm asking my elected officials, what do you think of this possibility? Is there any hope for that being something that could happen in this town? Is it something that should be considered, referred to a committee, anything?
Mr. Scott, I believe that the attorney is attempting to answer the questions based on the three scenarios that you have provided.
But it's not a question for the attorney. It's a question for the council.
I'm asking the attorney to address the question.
Yeah, so I think I can answer you what you're saying.
I'm asking the council to speak for themselves.
I'm presiding over the council. Could you please let the attorney respond to the questions that you have asked?
So first place, I think this only happens in the redevelopment areas, right? Because that's the only place where you have contracts. So in terms of a non-redevelopmentary project, they're going to be subject with all exigence, they don't get to negotiate an agreement on the rent control. It's just what the law is. So we're only talking about the redevelopment context specifically, which is the context in which I'm involved and negotiating with all the developers. So that's why they're being cautioned not to answer your question directly. But I'm Lance Wood for you. Everything is on the table. If there's a way to make, keep the market rates from going too high, we will do that. These are, all of these things are on the table for us to sort through.
Okay, and then we have an in-person question.
Evening, Kieran Crowley, 218 Harrison Avenue, and a resident. Track C redevelopment question and some comments, a bit of a pivot away from the last question. So I am pro development, redevelopment in town, badly needed. And I understand from the negotiation standpoint that you can't, you know, show your cards and, you know, lose that kind of leverage. But I would like to hear more about the process in terms of how we're going to get from these early negotiations through a series of decisions. And I think, I mean personally, I really want to hear that. And I think it may go some way to ensuring the public that we know exactly who is putting their name and their vote behind certain steps in this process. And, you know, just before someone responds, I assume, it sounds like there's a small team leading the negotiation, now the attorney and Councilman Hale and Matt. So when then does the broader team get to weigh in? If it goes to the zoning type dialogue, are they still free to vote yes or no? Or, you know, have things been set in stone? So a set-wise explanation would be appreciated.
Okay, so let me, first, the team's a little bit bigger than that. We have a planner and a financial consultant throughout the process. So we, yeah, we don't just rely on attorney, I'm sorry. Actually, probably the most important.
Attorney Allen, maybe we should add like who the team is and so people get a better idea.
Okay, so the team starts with the mayor and the council. Councilman Hale is most involved. Then day-to-day, the only person on the ground is the administrator who is the most involved, spends the most of the time on it compared to all of us. And she's sort of the gatekeeper for everybody, right? So she's pulling in the council as needed, the professional team. On the legal side is our law firm, so we're special counsel, might be doing it for 35 years, finds out about state. We have a planner who is involved in making sure that the planning for the components of the design, the bulk standards, the access, all those things are going to be torging. And then our firm routinely, and we will, retains a financial person to assist me to the acceptance of there's finances involved, like community benefits and things like that. So that's, so we cover pretty much the gamut and that's the team that negotiates. Where we are today is on all, we went through a very long process to get the zoning in place. So that's the redevelopment plan. So we went to the trouble of getting a redevelopment area designated, a redevelopment plan in place so we could have the negotiations we're talking about today, which we could not have in a normal zoning. We couldn't extract community benefits, for example, out of a project.
But I understood we're going off piece from the.
So the area done and we got the plan done and we called the parcels A, B, C, and D. We probably could have thought of something more creative, but that's what we ended up. And now, then we have an RFP process to the world. And we said to the development community, here's the four parcels, bid on one or all. If it's part of your bid, you think that we should make the area bigger because we better propose that. So we asked them to be pretty creative. Said even though we have a plan, if you have something that's better, maybe tell us about it. We may not agree or disagree. So we got a number of proposals, we vetted them and we designated one team for the classic cleaners for two great properties on that side of the street. And another team we designated for the farmer's market study and those processes. And we conditionally designated each of those. We did that so we could exclusively negotiate with each other. That's their benefit to us. They funded an escrow to start paying for all these professionals that are ready for you, right? So that's just like a planning board application, trying to shift the costs of doing this from us to the developer. We're in the middle of that process. On the one side, what I can tell you is sort of from the classic cleaner side, that's is going real well. We have two property owners there who we're not in charge of. And so we're working pretty, we have to get them to the, we have to bring that into the full, long way, so we're working really hard to try and do that. On that side, that is an entire process over here. And then on the, on the side of the farmer's market, the developer has suggested that we, they have control over certain properties. Someone thinks they should, we should consider making a particular project. He said in our opinion that you would either have to control the property, have the property or consent for us to do that. They have that. So we thought, well, that kind of makes sense. So we're in the process of considering expanding that area and expanding the plans to cover that area. The mayor has been really pressing them and us to get a concept plan so that as part of that expansion, we can begin to show you what that looks like. And I think that's what the mayor is most, because we're going to go to expand the plan. And she would love us to also have some renderings of what that, why we're expanding it. I won't have all the economics or the agreement, but she's been pressing us until we're ready to try and get a rendering. And so that's where our main focus is, Matt Proctor, to show the public what that particular project could look like. Sort of as we go through the expanding of the plan. So we're pretty focused on that. And oh, by the way, we're trying to set a grocery store. We're trying to figure out what to do with, what it is, we're trying to figure out. Everyone's file the Shell station, trying to fix.
You don't want me to go through many.
That's exactly why I'm really wanting to know the process. There's so many distractions, so many people involved, so could you speak?
Yeah, okay, so the next step is, once we, our intention is to, once we have a design we like, probably before we have the actual deal worked out, we're going to show that. We'd like to be able to show the design, yes. And then we're going to have to go through the effort, negotiate a redevelopment agreement and a financial agreement or whatever other agreements, a purchase and sale agreement if they're buying our property. And then we will present all of that in a package, it will be a package to the government, to the public. And if we do what we've done before, we'll put it on in a meeting, we'll explain it and we'll probably give people time to think about it, ask questions and all the rest of it. So our Island Parks practice has been to sort of reveal all that, give people time to think about it, digest it and other questions. And then come challenge us at a meeting about it. And then we got offended, right, the council team offended. And then we'll go on. Some of those votes would be two meetings, for example, purchase of properties, ordinance. The resolution would be, the disagreement would be number of votes over number of meetings. Explaining it, reporting on it, of the public hearing, or on Saturday, for meetings right there. When that's all said and done, have it back to the planning board for another, where the plan goes, goes through the normal site plan process where they put on the traffic studies and all the things that have to come along for a site plan. And that's, that could be as many meetings as the planning board wants to have to get it done. And then after all that's done.
And the developer would sign at what, where along the.
So the redevelopment agreement, financial agreement, purchase and sale agreement, it's signed before they go to the planning board. But after we've sort of revealed, expanded the area and revealed the pictures.
Can I mention one thing that you may have implied it, but just to make it clear? As part of this expansion, if that's where, if the governing body is convinced and we present it to the public, we will take feedback on it, then the plan has to be amended, right Joe?
Yeah.
And that's a planning board meeting and that's, you know, that's a discussion about that. Like you said, we won't have all the financials figured out, but at least zoning will be redone. And there's the same process, a version of that process is what we'll go through for the amendment. So there's, there's a lot of steps along the way toward getting this project, you know? And there's many opportunities, although I know it's frustrating so far, for the public to engage on that once we are able to come out of this kind of confidential phase.
No, no, yeah, it's incredibly frustrating. I've seen it, at your Highland Park, everyone's frustrated, I get that. But I would sort of measure this group of people by past performance, right? So how many, how many meetings do we have to get our redevelopment plan drafted through the process? I think we had one meeting I've ever seen on any of my projects ever. So if you want to judge them about how transparent they are or whether you're going to give you enough time to think about it or impact it, just see what they've done so far. We've, some people will say we've taken too long, some have taken not long enough. Absolutely had enormous amount of public input every step of the way. So if past practices is a predictor of future acts by this group of people, you can rest assured there'd be a lot of public input and output.
No more online hands?
Okay.
I see, there's some audience hands, Elsie.
I just wanted to, from the last discussion, I just.
Name again, please.
Debbie Israel. And I just want to say that I think that the, that the fact that you, you said that there'll be places where it'll come before the people, where the people will hear what the choices are at that point and where to move along. So as long as they're, and they'll be publicized so the people can come in. I think this is, this sounded to me like the concern of the gentleman on the computer on the Zoom call that people should have input when things are decided. And that's really what it's at.
I just want to add that they know what, how persistent I have been about this. That when we do do the presentations for public, for public forum and public comment, that we need to have a large enough space that will accommodate everyone. And you should have stations with pictures and rendering so people can add their comments as they move around the area. It will not be in the community center, lesson learned. We'll get a big enough space where people will be, it may be someplace like maybe the high school cafeteria where it's a large enough space, we'll have enough stations for people to make add comments with stickers or what have you, and we'll be collecting those and working on those. So that's one of the things I've been pushing for, that's why I want to see pictures. And I know just about everyone want to see the idea, the concept of what it's going to look like.
Hi, Abby Stern, Parker, I live on Parker Street. I really appreciated all of that discussion, it's a lot to kind of think through. So I was, I'm not sure my thoughts are super well collected, but one thing I wanted to speak to is the idea of what central spaces in this town? And making sure that when we look at projects in this town, we are looking at the entire town and it doesn't just include our lower Rarden area. I also think it's a commonly known phenomenon that people who can attend meetings like this, Zoom makes it much more accessible. And I was one of the people, as many people were encouraging Zoom, so I think that's great. But it's still the phenomenon that the people who are going to be able to attend are the most privileged of us, myself included. I think that's something that needs to be acknowledged. And I think it's great to have these community meetings, but we also need to look at what is for the greater good and not just the loudest people like myself. You know, and I acknowledge that I'm one of those people. And I definitely try to think about what's good for everyone, but, you know, we need to make sure that we're representing the entire town in these negotiations, which I, I think, you know, what you said, everything's on the table, that's, that's great. I think we'd all like to have a magic wand and say that we can get 100% affordable housing and rent control and all of these things, and it is a balance. When I think about what is kind of a great equalizer in town, I think this is a little bit of a hype dream and I don't think it's going to happen, but I'll just put it out there, I think something, you know, a community resource that is, that I think of as an equalizer is something like a splash park or, you know, a, a, something, you know, I always think about things for kids, but, you know, something that's a community resource that's for everybody, that's accessible to everybody in, like people are saying, a central space, what does central mean in this town? I don't know that it's what we all, you know, are speaking to, what, you know, when we talk about central, I don't know that we all have the same definition of that. But I think that, I guess my point is, again, this is not super well thought out, I apologize. We need to all be thinking, you all need to be thinking, I need to be thinking, we all need to be thinking outside of ourselves and what is best for the entire town. And I hope that having, you know, just one more person reminding us of that is helpful in these negotiations and that, you know, the negotiations are not focused, you know, it's a balance to balance all of these different considerations. So I hope, you know, I know it's a long time away and we're not there yet, but I hope that whatever the outcome is, I'm excited and I hope that, you know, it's really great progress for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. That is our primary focus, we look at the entire town for the 15,000 plus people that live in Highland Park, those who can attend meetings, those who cannot, but still want to see our town move ahead and still want to see our town progress and still want to be included in every fiber of our town. Yes, we are, we collectively look at all of that. From it pocket parks to environmental spaces, we're looking at all of it and trying to make it fit in our one point something square feet of property that were densely populated. We're trying to make that there's a space for all as much as we can. So thank you, yes, that is our priority as we look at all of this.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
And Abby, one thing I'd like to remind, not just you, but everybody. I may be on the council, but I am one of our lower income residents. I use our food pantry, I have housing assistance, I have a disabled husband. So I am always looking for all the residents, not just people who consider themselves privileged, but for every resident. So, and I will continue to fight for the people that aren't hurt. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that.
Hi, Lois, North Second Avenue. And thank you Tara for that, that's a big help. And Abby mentioned the splash park, that was going to be my second request. Why not? Back in the seventies, there was a study that somebody wanted a pool down in Dunlop City. And that was cool pool at late seventies. So a splash park or a few. I'm sure it's a huge engineering feat, but it would be helpful in the nineties even just to come shopping. The question I want to know is, this morning about 9:30, I called DPW because there were three and then a fourth person was, there was a very, very strong smell of oil spill on North Second. I think heating oil, somebody must have gotten into the living room. So was that resolved? It sort of dissipated by noon. Couldn't open the front door, couldn't open the front windows on Second because it was so strong.
Councilperson.
DPW did respond to that, but I'm not sure if that's a chief, if you wanted to address that incident. There was, there was a, there was a truck that got, actually, its undercarriage got stuck on a stormwater, some stormwater infrastructure.
Mike explained it to me.
And it caused the truck to leak. And so it hasn't. And so the hazmat, the hazmat crew came out. It was all cleaned up. DPW and the emergency were notified. This was, this was up Montgomery, yeah.
But it had a trail going up. I smelled it too on my way to work. I passed that way and I called Mike. I said, what is this? And he explained it to me. And the county OEM came out. I can't speak to the specifics, but I smelled it this morning and I smelled it around noon. It had already been remediated by the time, by noon because the truck wasn't there. But, but they, county OEM came out, applied the proper material, kitty litter, whatever it is to the, to the oil trail. But it was a private truck, wasn't one of ours. That was, of course, my first house, one of ours. But, and, and as far as I know, they, they inspected all the storm drains, nothing got into the river. So they caught everything in plenty of time. Maybe your call alerted them.
I don't know. My third, what time did you work?
I was out, no, it would have been later. It would have been earlier. I get to in that, so yeah. But I didn't think about it until I smelled it again at noon and then I said, something's up. So anyway, I'm glad to report that everybody came out and, and the situation.
The truck was backing up?
I can't, I don't want to get into, I don't want to get into the details that I don't know, Lois. But it was an accident and the guy drove off and was leaking.
He drove away and didn't realize?
I guess he didn't. And so maybe he just finally did. I don't know.
That's the good thing about, see something, say something.
All right, anyone else?
I don't see hands online.
Okay.
We have no work session. We have no executive session. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting is scheduled for October tenth at seven PM. Have a good night, everyone. Be safe and remember to change over those batteries in your smoking detectors and radar detectors and be safe. Thanks.